Well, good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being September 11th, 2018. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, and it's also being broadcast live on PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And I'd like to start the meeting. If everybody could please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. And I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Merzag. She is gonna be introducing two wonderful students from the South School. Ms. Merzag?
I have the pleasure of introducing Avery Skinner. She is ten years old. She enjoys going to the beach and spending time with her two younger sisters. She's on a competitive dance team at North Shore Dance Academy and plays basketball and softball in PBD. Avery is venturing out and trying something new this fall as she is playing lacrosse. She has also been a Girl Scout since kindergarten, and one of her favorite Scout activities is putting together care package for those in need. Her favorite subject in school, her favorite subjects are math and art. When she grows up, she wants to be a veterinarian. If you could join the mayor up here, Avery. Thank you for being here tonight. Our other friend joining us is Brady Trakia. He's looking forward to a great year in fifth grade. He just earned his black belt in karate. Congratulations from Larry Lovett. He loves helping Mr. Lovett teach the four and five-year-olds at the PBD YMCA on Sunday mornings. Math is his favorite subject, and he always volunteers to help with community events at school. When he grows up, he wants to be a police officer. Brady, if you wanna join us over here?
(inaudible)
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd also like to recognize Dr. Higgins from the South. Thanks for being here tonight, Dr. Higgins.
Terrific. And now we will go to approval of minutes. We have one regular school committee meeting minutes to be approved from August 28th, 2018.
Motion to receive and approve.
Further motion by Mrs. Dunn for approval, and seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Present.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we'll go to item number three, approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter, we have four warrants today.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3932, in the amount of $127,210.59. That was dated September 11th, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant A, number 3932, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3933, dated September 6th, in the amount of $2,828,724.92, subject to audit.
Second. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant B, number 3933, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant C, number 3934, dated September 6th, in
the amount of $167,450.79, subject to audit.
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant C, number 3934, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant D, number 3935, dated September 6th, in the amount of $30,747.73, subject to audit.
Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant D, number 3935, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Next item, continued business. First item under continued business, Mrs. Dunn is the MSBA Higgins Project. Any new updates or anything to report?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Our next meeting will take place on either the 20th or the 27th of September. We're just going to confirm that, and unfortunately, I didn't confirm it for tonight. But of course, that'll be at 4:00 PM here at the Higgins. Those are both Thursdays, and they're open to the public. What's going on since our last meeting and since the last report that I gave you, many of the issues that we were pushing to get done by the beginning of school have been done prior to the start of school or a couple days after. And I was very happy to see some of those today coming into the school, that they were completed. There is always a lot of concern, people have a lot of concern about the landscaping. And we had a very successful meeting to deal with the landscaping around the building. We're continuing not only to work on that, but also to learn more about it. And just so that the public knows, the area at the front of the school that people get very upset about because it looks overgrown, that is part of the flood mitigation for the city of PBD, and it works very well. So far, it's been really working well. But the plantings there are natural plants. They're needed for the drainage. So it has to be treated in a different manner than a nice green lawn. If people happen to notice during the summer, there were some areas up here next to the building, there were also drainage areas, but they're treated a bit differently. They had the most beautiful flowers that changed as one species went past, another one came in. So we're watching to see what the next one is. Those all need, they all need to be handled in a different way. There are three groups that are working on this. There is, of course, the custodians here at the school, the city and school maintenance department, and the recreation and forestry department. And I can't say enough to thank all of them for what they've done already. And we are working on a landscape maintenance schedule, and that will be coming soon. It's almost one of those things where we just needed to see how everything unfolded on site, to see what was working for us and what wasn't. And a lot of things depend on the weather, so you can't engrave it on stone on when something's going to be mowed, or how deep you'll be mowing, or the level of that. So I know people are concerned about it, but it really is being taken care of, and I ask everybody to be patient, and it is going to be a really useful area because it's ecologically very, very balanced, and it's one of the things that helps us to get a lead silver award for this building. So it's all important for the environment. I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Next item under continued business, Mr. Hockman is school start time surveys. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but this is really Ms. Carpenter's committee. It continues to be listed under my name. I'll yield to Ms. Carpenter.
Okay. Sorry about that. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. The last bit of homework you all had was to review the school start time surveys and choose some things that you wanted included or not included. I'm gonna have Mrs. Macarelli compile all of your responses, and we will put it in the next school committee packet for a complete review and vote on when and how we wanna send those out. Anybody have anything else on that?
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, I thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for keeping this issue moving along. I just wanted, to be clear, my intention at least, and I'm hoping that at the next school committee meeting, we actually vote on a survey that will be released to students shortly after our next meeting, so that we can hopefully get results back either by our first or second meeting in October.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Okay. Next item is the admission fees for football, drama, musicals. I believe, Mrs. Carpenter, are you going to take that item?
Yes. Mr. Amico can't be here tonight, as we all know that his mother-in-law passed away. So he asked me if we could continue on with this issue. So I think we have to revisit the admission fees for football, drama, musicals. I know there's been some concern about how this was gonna play out, how it affected our budget, how it's handled, the actual process of allowing the students to come in with their passes, and the structure and the procedures for that. And I did ask for Mr. Simmons and Mr. Buah to come tonight and explain to us how that's working out, if it's working out, anything that needs to be changed, and if we should move forward with this. So, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay?
Yes, I'd love to hear from the two gentlemen. Who would like to go first? Our athletic director? Mr. Buah, that'd be great. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if there's specific questions, or maybe you'd just like to give us a rundown of what your thoughts were and how last year went?
Sure. A couple of the issues that kind of popped up talking with my staff is identifying students that go to not only PBD High, but other PBD schools as well, from, in particular, the Higgins, as well as the elementary schools. I know for the people working the door at basketball games, or working the gate at the football games, you know, the issue always became, you know, students would show up, and, you know, they would say, "Hey, you know, Mr. Stone fell as my guidance counselor, Mr. Jones is my, you know, my band teacher," and they don't go to PBD High School because their friends from PBD have told them what to say so they can get in. And that's kind of the issue that we kind of have run into at the gate. You know, I had always instructed the ticket collector, said, "Don't argue. Don't get into the fight. Don't argue." But that's kind of the issue that's kind of popping up. I know in particular with the hockey rink, because it's owned by the state but run by the city, they have an equity clause. If they let PBD parents and PBD students in for free, they have to let parents and students from other schools in for free. And so they didn't collect any revenue for any of the PBD games last year. And I know that hurt the rink. I can't give you a number on what that did, but they took a hit because it was the, you know, the ten girls home games, the ten boys home games, that they lost revenue on. And I know that the rink manager, you know, had some concerns about that. Outside of that, it's more kind of supervision of crowd that we've kind of run into. We find mostly with the middle school age kids, they get kind of dropped off by their parents and said, "We'll see you at 9:30," and there's no one there to kind of supervise them. You know, it's myself, Mr. Grooby, and the handful of staff that we have that's kind of running around and trying to put out fires as we're trying to manage games and other things like that.
Good. No, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Buah, you may not know the answer, and I may have to refer to our business manager, but do we have any figure of, you know, a bottom line, what amount of money we were talking about as far as not taking in the money at the games, or budgetary, how that affected us?
In our discussion, it was about $10,000.
$10,000. Thank you.
And that's a rough estimate without going, I didn't have time today to be able to pull all that information from two years ago and last year. But I would say between basketball, hockey, football, this, that, it's probably rough about $10,000.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you, Mr. Buah. Did you notice any, or did any of your staff notice any change in attendance for sporting events at high school?
Not necessarily, I don't think it was a major increase on either end. You know, I know, I think week one last year, I think there was an abnormally large crowd, but after that, it kind of subsided back to kind of average. But again, I think it was more the issues, in particular football and basketball, of kind of the middle school age kids and some of the elementary school kids as kind of being dropped off for a couple hours, as kind of babysitting service and climbing over equipment. And that's the kind of stuff that we kind of ran into. It's more the kind of, you can't climb on the gymnastics equipment up top. Well, why can't I? Well, because you can't. You know, so it became running around and trying to put a lot of that stuff on.
Through the mayor to you. I did, I do recall that during this discussion that took place last year over this issue, there was a concern about increased attendance and the need for increased police officers and details. So without the increased attendance that was anticipated, there was no additional cost, or was there an additional cost for police details?
No, we stuck with the four police details that we had all year. Without having the figures in front of me, I can't necessarily tell you, you know, how much more, how less, you know, of a crowd. I'm just kind of going more on kind of eyeball test more than anything else. I don't have any of the data in front of me.
Yeah, no, and Mr. Buah, I'm not holding you to any exact numbers. I'm just, I think that the loss of revenue that you're referencing as a ballpark figure is gate receipts, but not increased expenditures.
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. And based upon what you're telling us today, do you have a recommendation for us as to whether or not you'd like to see this policy extended or terminated?
I am all for letting students in to games. I just think there needs to be a little bit more kind of clarification on, you know, if a kid doesn't have an ID, or, you know, kind of things like that that kind of popped up last year was kind of more in its, kind of its first year on our end. It was more, you know, we're not gonna kind of have these, you know, it's not fair to these ticket collectors that have to put up with the arguments and this, that, and the other. And I know, at least for hockey, I think we have to look at it kind of a little bit different because it is a state-controlled rink, you know, that kind of falls, falls under us, so.
Again, through the mayor to you. I'm glad to hear that you're at least in favor of continuing this. We need to maybe work harder on the procedure to ensure that your staff isn't abused, your staff is treated fairly, and is able to comply with the policy, if this is the will of this committee, to continue this policy, comply with the policy in a way that's fair and reasonable for everybody.
Right. It's more, again, kind of identifying as students come up, so they're not holding up the line and kind of creating all those issues, because that's, that becomes a bigger thing as a kid is like, "No, I go to PBD High," and they clearly don't, but they, you know, they're kind of getting by, and that is lost revenue. You know, that kind of comes in, that's, you know, that could pop up.
Thank you, Mr. Buah.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Olympia?
Through to the Chair. Hi, Mr. Buah, thank you for coming. Just want to let you know, Friday night, I was at the football game, and just by coincidence, when I was purchasing my ticket, there was a student in front of me that claimed that she went to PBD High, and I just want to let you know that people that work in the ticket booth did a great job because she gave the old excuse, "Well, I just moved here. I don't know any of my teachers' names." And they kind of peppered her a little bit, and actually ended up guilt, she ended up fessing up and buying the ticket. I guess she gave it a good try, but I was really amused by what she was trying to do. But, I mean, the people that work in the ticket booth, they weren't confrontational, they weren't, you know, trying to bully her, and it was, they were asking questions, and they were real professional about it, and...
Thank you. I have a really good staff of that.
Yeah, yeah, so that really, it was just, I was fascinated because like, "Oh, wow, we're gonna be talking about this," and so anyways. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to add to that, I, and I certainly advocated strongly for this. I really believe that not charging our students to go to the games really would help with just school spirit, city spirit. I did know that that would certainly come at a bit of a cost, that we would lose some gate receipts, and certainly I assume that there might be some game-playing going on to try to get into the game. And I would rather, you know, lose that little extra money and not, you know, not put your staff and others in a position to really question middle school students and younger students. I, you know, certainly, I don't think that's fair to put your staff in that position. But I do, I would certainly hope that we could continue this. $10,000, while it is, you know, a fairly large amount of money, I do think that we make up for it in school spirit and just feeling good about your community and having our students go to support our athletes, our performers. I do think that's important. But I know it does come at a bit of a cost to your programs, to the programs in our performing arts. But I do think that we do generate some goodwill, and I do like having, I love having when we're at the football games and others, to see all the students there, even though they're all kind of milling about, and it does become more of a social gathering, but I do think it's supportive of our students and everything we're trying to accomplish. So I certainly would be hoping that we continue that. Any more questions for Mr. Buah? Great. Mr. Simmons, can you please come on up? Thank you, Mr. Buah. Well, welcome. So did, do you want to kind of give us your feeling on things, or did we want to ask any questions? Mr. Simmons, I'll leave it up to you. Mrs. Carpenter, if you want to open up with a question?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Simmons. We discussed this before in a subcommittee with you, and your department is much different than the athletic department when it comes to charging for things. And I'm not sure if the full committee was aware, and I think it was just a subcommittee, so I'm hoping you can explain the differences between charging and some of the different shows that you have, and how it differs from the athletics, and if it's working for you or not, or anything you'd like to change.
Okay. I might describe our performing arts events in having three different kind of charging levels. There are the concerts that we give, like a best spring concert, which is generally, you know, the band and the chorus combining. Previously, we would charge a small fee, $5, and not a high rate. And we would do a few concerts like that each year. We also do some fundraiser concerts, because better than selling candy or some other item, you know, why not attempt to make money or to use what we do, you know, our music-making to do some fundraising? So the acoustic coffee houses are a great example of that, where again, we might charge $5, but it makes a difference. And, you know, that money then can be used to defray trip costs and many different kinds of things that the general budget is not well suited to helping with. And the third kind of performance that I might describe is what the Drama Club does. And their needs are very distinct and unique, and especially with regard to the Spring Musical. And that, previously, the ticket price was a bit higher for that, but it worked well to balance the fiscal needs of our Drama Club. So the policy last year worked fine for the concerts that we do, the spring concert, the fall shows. Everything was fine there. The fundraisers, not so good. Not good. And the Drama Club became uniquely challenging because the general budget was not ready for the kinds of expenses that the Drama Club incurs when the Drama Club does what the Drama Club does so well. And it was a challenge for me and the then-business manager to figure out how we would pay for royalties. The leading character needs a boa, and, you know, writing a purchase order for a boa, that's new for me. So it had some major challenges.
Mr. Simmons, I'm sorry, Mr. Carpenter, if I could jump in. So on a fundraiser like that, is that proclaimed as a fundraiser, advertised as a fundraiser typically? Because I think, you know, that to me is a little bit different than just a standard performance. You know, if it is a fundraiser geared towards raising money for a specific, you know, I think that maybe should be treated differently than just a regular performance.
Comforting to hear your clarification on that.
Yeah.
We were not sure...
I mean, that's just my feeling. I don't want to speak for everybody, certainly, but, you know, if it is a proclaimed fundraiser, or you wanted to market it or advertise it a fundraiser, I mean, I think that might be something we could look at differently than just a, you know, a performance or a game or something like that. That's just my feeling. Certainly would want to hear others' thoughts on that. But is it typically, has it been done that way? Has it been advertised as a fundraiser?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the Chair, Mr. Simmons. So along the same lines, that's very similar to one of our sports teams going out and having a car wash. The boosters take that money and they use it to support shirts, or trips, or things like that. And that was essentially kind of stuck into this policy inappropriately, I think. And I think what you're saying, and maybe, you know, the committee will go along with separating those, putting them back to the way they were, and just not charging for the concerts, is that, is that a resolution, or do you have another recommendation?
Yeah, if I'm, if I may.
Or maybe not.
That sounds great. I might recommend if, or ask you to consider, through the Chair, allowing us at the concerts to just do a donation in, you know, an old drum or something, and simply, if people want to throw a few coins our way, that's great. With regard to the Drama Club, that one still emerges as something that's unique and difficult to adhere to the policy. And I don't quite know what to recommend, except to say, let the Drama Club go back to what the Drama Club did, charge a ticket price. It's a higher price for the musical and a lower price for the straight plays. Let the concerts be donation, and let the fundraisers be fundraisers. That would be my recommendation, and I really appreciate your letting me say as much.
No, thank you. And I think all of us knew that this was a new policy, would put a little bit of pressure on the athletic department and the performing arts department, and we wanted your input and to get your suggestions. And it's certainly something I think we can all work on together and tweak a bit to try to make it more accommodating and more realistic for you and what you're trying to accomplish. So I don't know if it's something that we could put into quality and standards and maybe try to tie up some of these and maybe go with Mr. Simmons' suggestions. They seem reasonable to me. But I do think this is something that I know we were gonna have to work with and review and try to come up with some ways for it to work better for everybody, if that makes sense. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may inquire of Mr. Simmons a little bit. So in terms, and I also realized that, I think we all did, that there was a difference between how this policy would impact arts and drama as opposed to athletics, and there is a distinction in terms of athletics having user fees, and there was some revenue there to support some of the programs. I think athletics also has, some athletic teams also have some significant booster programs and some significant fundraising that they're doing outside of what the student athletes are doing. And I know that you have a very, you and, your department has a very supportive parent group as well that does a lot of work, a lot of hard work for maintaining our programs. But, so in terms of the, I had hoped that this was gonna go a different way. I had hoped that we were going to, as a committee and as a community, going to recognize, that's a bad word, that's a horrible word. We were going to fund, in particular, the musical through our budget, so that we wouldn't have to deal with the argument, if you will, and a legitimate argument, that you need money to pay royalties and for costumes and for scores and things along those lines. And so if I may, what is a general or a ballpark dollar figure for a musical to be performed at PBD Veterans Memorial High School? And royalties are based upon seating, and that's constant. I know royalties are also fluctuate based upon the production. But what would, what would it cost the Drama Department to put on a spring musical?
An educated guess, or an educated number, would take a bit more research on my part. So I'm gonna try to do some fast calculation. I know that royalties run between 2,500 and 3,000 alone. There's the staging involved, costumes, scenery, sets, lights, so it adds up.
And like I said to Mr. Buah, I'm not holding you to a number, but is $10,000 a ballpark number?
Sure. Sure.
$7,500 to $15,000, let's say. I mean, that, I know some productions are bigger than others.
I'm not entirely comfortable commenting on it past what I know to be the royalties. But the other figures, I have to do more research.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree with you that getting back into subcommittee, at least for the art and music part of it, there's no urgency at this point. We have a little time to work this through, is important and worthwhile. I think if we're taking a $10,000 hit on athletics, which is what... I think if we're taking a ten thousand dollar hit on athletics, which is what it sounds like we're doing, I think we can support drama in the same manner and, you know, work towards finding ten thousand dollars. I'd like to see as much opportunity for these students, performers, to have exposure by as many people attending programs as possible. I know there's an argument, I know Mr. Simmons, I think, has put it forward in the past, that there's value in the ticket price, because people are, people have invested something into going to a show. But I think that there's also value in exposure. And to have as many people as possible be able to view performances and see our students shine as they do every year is something that I think is a worthwhile investment.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Good points. Good. Anybody else have any comments? Mrs. Kopfner?
I just had a question through the chair. If the business manager could let us know. I think that we did fund some part of drama or musics. Do you know how much that was? Because we tried to make sure that he was covered for everything that he needed. So, I'm just trying to see if we know what that figure is.
Not off the top of my head. It wasn't, the difference was not enough to cover the program. I can assure you.
Yeah.
Right.
We can gather that information. And so, right now, we'll continue with the sports, allowing students to move forward at the, to attend the sporting events. All students would go free. And I think we should put it into, Mrs. Dunn, the Quality and Standards Subcommittee for further discussions and work with the drama, performing arts department as to ways we can help. But I certainly agree with Mr. Hockman in the sense that we knew when we did this that there was going to be a little bit of financial pressure put on the departments and that we, as school committee members, school administrators, wanted to help and make sure that the students weren't without in any way. So, I think that's something that we can continue to work on. That was certainly not the intent of this. The intent was, I think, purely just to try to foster school spirit, community spirit, get more people to go and appreciate the great work our students are doing. So, we'll do that. A couple of quick comments. Mrs. Dunn, then, Mr. Hockman?
Yes, I definitely, Quality and Standards will work with the staff to come up with a policy. But I also do think Mr. Bu would needs to be included on the athletic side, because the hockey, that is a problem, and we need to probably square this away. So, both sides of the coin need to be able to have some good input in that. And having some figures to work with would help too, so that we can see the actual impact on this. One thing I would like to bring up, though, is if we were to have any type of consideration that if students have a student ID, that would certainly help at the gate. And, you know, if someone comes in with a coupon, they're pretty happy when they get to a store or a show. But if they come in with their student ID, you know who's deserving of that discount. And I don't know what the members would like, but it is definitely something I would raise at the subcommittee meeting. But I'll throw it out there right now, if anybody has any input on utilizing the student ID as proof of enrollment, and that might help.
Through the chair. I'm trying to, I put a phone call out to our two photo companies that we use, picture companies, because they are the ones, except for here at the middle school and at the high school, that they do the photo IDs for students. So, if they could expedite that, because usually it does not happen until the students have their fall student pictures. So, I'm trying to see if we can expedite that, even if we use an older picture until we get the new pictures. So, kids can have those for the start of school. So, I'm trying to see if we can expedite that.
My thought being, just as I kind of touched on a bit earlier, I just don't want to put our staff in a position where they have to make a decision. And I think it's kind of a little unseemly to have, you know, start questioning middle school students that, you know, we need proof of, you know, if a student's going to do that. I just, I don't know if we want to really delve into strict questioning if they don't have their ID with them or some other thing like that. You know, unless they're wearing a Salem or Beverly jacket, then we can charge double. But I just don't want to put, you know, any staff that is helping us or assisting with the athletic department or whatever, to be put in a situation where they're quizzing a kid and want backup information or start asking about teachers and things. I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. If a student wants to do that from another school and try to save a few bucks, I just don't think that that's something that we should be too concerned about. Just my feeling. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get to my point, I think that perhaps Committee Member Olympia is an expert in weeding out students that should get in for free and students that shouldn't. And maybe he can offer a tutorial to some of Mr. Bu and Mr. Simmons' staff. No, seriously, though. I think, my memory is that the policy that we enacted last year sunset, and we do need to do something tonight. And what I would suggest or propose is that we extend the policy for athletics, for fall athletics through our first meeting in October, which is October nine, so that maybe extend it to October 10, in case there are events that night. And I don't know if Mr. Simmons has any concerts or there are any concerts that would be germane to this before that.
Forgive me, what day of the week is the 10th?
It's a Wednesday.
We're okay.
So, if we could, maybe we're more comfortable just extending it for purposes of athletics through October 10. So, moved.
Thank you. And I thought, Mrs. Dunn, your point on the hockey was a good one. Let's put that into committee.
Yeah.
But in terms of the athletic events, for the fall events up till October 10, a motion made by Mr. Hockman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Olympia. On that motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Just one question for Mr. Simmons. Is the acoustic coffeehouse after the 10th? Okay. Thank you.
Great. Roll call vote?
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Kopfner?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Anadis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
No.
Okay, and I don't think we need a motion to put those other remaining items, performing arts, drama, the hockey program, would go into the Quality and Standards Subcommittee for further discussion.
Okay. We'll schedule that meeting very quickly.
Thank you.
Mr. Bu, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? The microphone is open. And now, we'll go to Superintendent Murtagh for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jackie Uphanos, the principal of the center school, has sent you a memo about a surplus of books, so we can remove some of them from the center school if you approve.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the principal.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Anadis. On that motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, this came up several years ago, different set of books, but it was with the center school. And the committee had, I can't remember if there's a policy on it or not, but made it a practice that we would offer those extra textbooks to students who might want to take them home. And those Treasury of Literature books are beautiful. And I would like to just mention that again, that before they are disposed of or shipped out, that we offer them to students not just at the center. I would do center first, but then to reach out if there are still some left, because just that one book might make a difference for another student.
Will do.
Thank you.
Motion, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed, hearing none? Thank you.
We just, we have some exciting news. We just got notification that the grant that we wrote last spring for Four Kids Only, for the Twenty-First Century Grant, for the Carroll School, was granted to us just recently on September 4th. So, that's allowing us to invite, excuse me, more Carroll School students to the after-school programming at, for kids only, at the Carroll School. So, we're very excited about that. So, that's information for you. So, now, we'll have the Welch, the Center, and the Carroll.
We do have a question on that item. Mrs. Kopfner?
Through the chair, Ms. Murtagh. Is that only for after-school or do they have before-school?
I'm checking into that. The forty to sixty extra students, I think, is for after-school.
It's for after-school. The grant doesn't cover them in the morning, just the afternoon?
I'm double-checking that, but that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. So, does that grant now mean, like, anyone that goes to the after-school program is now free? All of the students or just the forty that's in this?
We can do an additional forty.
An additional. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Communication from Chief Griffin. The summer program, the Essex County camp, was excellent. And I want to, Chief Griffin sent us a note. However, I want to thank him, his department, all Essex County, the police office is there as well, the student mentors. It was such a wonderful program, and I think we touched, well, they touched the lives of over three hundred students. So, I want to thank them. They thanked us, but I want to thank them. And that's notification in your packet as well. I did have a question that I wanted to bring up to the board tonight. Chromebooks at PBD Veterans Memorial High School for seniors. We took the eighth grade Chromebooks this year that were in very good shape, that were worked on by some of our Higgins Middle School students and our tech department to clean them up, making them look great for our seniors. We want to pass them out this week or the beginning of next. But we want to make sure that you're okay with, we do a thirty-dollar insurance policy under a family ID for grades nine, 10, and 11. We want to do a twenty-dollar fee, and students can take them home if they pay the twenty dollars at the end of the year to bring to college or career. Or if they don't pay, they give them back to our tech department at the end of the year. So, that's what we would like to do, but I would like a vote of the committee, if possible.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Further motion made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mrs. Kopfner. Any thoughts or comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. And that is it?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Murtagh. No written communications today, so we'll go on to subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee, Mr. Hockman, anything to report?
Just that education is taking place in the district. All of our students are back to school, including kindergarten. We have some enrollment figures that Ms. Murtagh has been sharing with us, and we'll schedule a subcommittee meeting in the near future.
Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Kopfner?
Thank you. I just wanted to let the committee know that I will be bringing forward ratification for Unit B and AFSCME, and I'll schedule a meeting, and I'll get those out to you so you can review them, and we'll ratify them hopefully next meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. School safety?
I'll be working on a schedule and a meeting towards the end of September, so.
Great. Athletics and wellness, Mrs. Kopfner?
Nothing to report.
Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we have a couple of items. First, just a report, we had another Quality and Standards Subcommittee meeting this evening prior to tonight's regular school committee meeting. At that subcommittee meeting, we discussed further the policies which were concerning student payment for meal plans. Those need to be examined further with staff, so we're not bringing those forward. But we did have a new policy that came through from MASC, not very different from ours, but it was concerning minutes. And one of the changes we'll be making to this, and it will come to you all at the next meeting, it's been recommended for first reading, was just that in the, in the policy as it stands, it says papers referred to in the minutes need not be included in the permanent record if they're adequately identified in those minutes. We'd like to maintain current practice, which is to keep a hard copy of any materials that are received or distributed at a school committee meeting with that current meeting packet. So, we'll be changing that language, and it will come up for a vote at the next meeting for first reading. The second item, tonight, before you, in your packet, you should have received three policies that we're recommending. This will be their first reading, and after the second reading, they would become policy. The first one is student activity accounts, which is policy JJF. So, I'd like to make a motion that policy JJF be accepted this evening for first reading. So moved.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote?
Mr. Mayor, if I?
Yes, I'm sorry. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Just a quick question. Thank you, through you to Ms. Dunn. I think in this policy, which makes sense to me at least, there's a three-year waiting period before the dormant activity, student activity account is subject to the policy. And I think it, there's an inference there that if the activity resumes within the three years, that it assumes the activity fund.
No, actually, that portion that you're speaking with, as far as a graduating class, they have three years if they have remaining funds after all of their expenses have been paid. Within three years, they can go and claim those funds. Those funds would not be released to that class until the class has obtained an EIN number and a proper bank account for that money to be deposited. If a class does not go in to request the money, or if they have, if they have nothing left, then nothing happens. But if they don't go in to request that money, then it actually, that fact needs to come to the school committee, at which time we determine where that fund would go, whether it would be returned to the general student activity fund for the high school, or whether it would be used for something else.
Thank you.
Roll call vote on the motion, please?
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Kopfner?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Anadis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. The next policy before you for first reading is educational opportunities for military children. This is very important. It's actually needed throughout the country. Military students move quite often, and this is to give equity of educations. One of the only things I appreciate about Common Core is that if someone moves from Massachusetts and goes to Alaska, and they're in the second grade, that they're going to be on track for the same curriculum in that grade. It's been very, very difficult in the past years for our military students because of the frequent moves. They generally move every two years. And we do have military students here in PBD. We're close to Hanscom, and we're close to Portsmouth. So, it has happened in the past where we've had children who are in that type of predicament, predicament, I'm sorry. And this policy is important for them, and it will make things a lot better across the board for those students. So, this is policy JFABE. And I'd like to make a motion that policy JFABE be approved and accepted this evening for first reading. So moved.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just an opportunity to continue my plea for digital records, because this is exactly one of the reasons why digitizing our records would allow for the easy and efficient transfer of these records for these students that we're creating a policy for. And Ms. Dunn couldn't be more right. These are worthwhile, this is a worthwhile policy that is necessary. It's real. It happens in our district. It happens in our country daily. So, I would ask if the superintendent to do all she can with her team to continue along the line of digitizing our records.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. All in favor on the motion? Any opposed, hearing none? That's a vote. Mrs. Dunn?
And the third policy this evening for first reading is educational opportunities for children in foster care. This is to establish stability for students who are in the foster care system. Our school system does a very good job of advocating for those students and of working with other school districts so that the students have a lot of stability in their life. It's really a very important policy, and honestly, I think what it's doing right here is just codifying what we do every day in PBD. But it is, it is a necessary policy, really. So, for first reading, I'd like to make a motion that policy JFABF be accepted, and for first reading, so moved.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed, hearing none? Roll, that's a vote.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
And, oh, I will schedule a Quality and Standards meeting immediately to work on the issue of the funding for athletics and for the performing arts.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Dunn, anything to report on the City Council Advisory Board liaison position?
Yes, actually, we have something. We had a meeting of our liaison subcommittee this evening. There is a new program with MASC for students, student leaders who are on the student advisory boards, and they're working in conjunction with the charting of, charting the course program. The very first offering of this program was this past spring by Division One, which we are Division One, and Division Nine. we are Division One, and Division Nine, from, the chair is from Revia. And they held that first program at Danvers with the charting of course. The program was excellent. They got a lot of information from the students, and they gave the students a lot of information back about what, what they can do in their role as a student advisory board member. So, not only is a second program coming up, it will be held this Saturday at Assabett Regional Vocational School down in Marlboro. Our students can go with no charge, as long as they register, so that they'll be able to be provided with materials and lunch. But during that discussion, what the liaison board, we would like to meet with the student advisory board to provide them the information that MASC is going to give to us, so that they too will know what they can do as a student advisory board member, what their responsibilities are. And you will be amazed at what some of the student advisory boards have done throughout Massachusetts. It was a really very interesting feedback, and MASC, of course, is using that to build the program even further. So, with, with your permission, Superintendent Murtagh will coordinate with you and with Mr. Buckley, and meet with the students and work with them so that they become a stronger group.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Excellent. Special education parent advisory board, Mr. Olympia?
Yeah, I'm actually going to post a meeting for September 26. It's a Wednesday, 6 o'clock at the Higgins. I invited Ms. Gruby, and I invited Ms. Murtagh to attend the first meeting of the school year for CPAP.
Great. Thank you very much. Any new business to move forward tonight? We will have items for the next agenda, handling the regular course. The next school committee meeting is September 25. Thank you for a good meeting, everyone.